We're on the record.
Nora, you want to read the little speech? Are you laughing at me?
Nora, you're off.
Yes, I know. I didn't hear Bob announce, open the meeting.
I can, I can do the old style if you tell me what date this meeting was noticed.
I actually forgot to grab that and bring it home with me. So.
In accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six, that's six, that New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by the board secretary who did a daily record and published sometime within the last thirty days. Nora, please call the roll. A copy of this will be included with the minutes of meeting. Nora, please call the roll.
Okay, before I call the roll, I just want to say this announcement is for members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting, rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session. Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willins. Mr. Willins.
Here, sorry about that.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Glaive.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Strazi.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to go to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Any hands, Nora?
No hands.
We got a resolution to approve?
Yes.
Can someone move that resolution?
Which one is?
It's application twenty-one eleven, Richard Fazalaro, twelve Fox Run Block ninety-eight lot ten point three oh. Zone R three C variance to construct a pool deck contrary to section four thirty dash ten I in section four thirty thirty-five, column thirteen.
So move, Willins.
Second ready.
Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result is the variance is approved and noted. Uh, okay, uh, no other correspondence or anything, right, Nora?
No other correspondence.
Okay, let's go into case nineteen fifty-six DTP acquisitions LLC. Attorney is present, I believe. Is the attorney present?
He shows new.
The attorney for the applicant, please unmute. Mr. Vogel, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, he's there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Vogel, I believe that your second witness was up and that the objector's attorney was questioning him. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, the objector's attorney is who, Nora? He present?
James Bryce.
Thank you, Bernie. Can we find him?
Nora, you're muted. Nora, we don't hear you.
Is James Bryce from Murphy McKean?
Here? I'm here.
There he is.
I'm here.
So Bryce, do you want to continue what you're questioning then?
Yeah, is the witness still available?
He's here.
All right. All right, Mr. Stretch, can you hear me?
I can, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Stretch, I think that the last time we were here, I'm just trying to summarize some testimony that was provided before just for summary purposes, just so that we have a starting point.
And Mr. Bryce, before you start, just for the record, the witness has been prior, sworn prior, he understands that he's under oath and his testimony here is the truth. Correct?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, so Mr. Stretch, last time, I think that there was some testimony and testimony before you that this facility that you're seeking to develop is, is a hundred percent rental, correct?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, and just to clarify, there's a hundred and fifty-six units, fifty independent living cottages being proposed, fifty apartments, and ultimately fifty-six memory care units, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, out of the fifty apartments, and I know that I'm trying to just clarify this because it was very unclear in my notes, how many of those apartments are you anticipating having licensed for assisted living?
All of them.
So you're looking to have all fifty apartments be licensed for assisted living, even though on your site plan it indicates independent backslash assisted living?
That's correct.
Okay, now, is there any type of age minimum required for entry into your facility?
Um, the age minimums are usually outlined by local regulations, and so the average age in our assisted living communities is right around eighty-four and a half, eighty-three and a half years old. I think I mentioned that in testimony last time.
Mr. Stretch, that's, thank you, I appreciate what the average age is, but is there a minimum age of entry that you will require to be a resident of the facility?
Whatever the, the minimum age is, by local regulations would be the minimum age of the community.
So if it was eighteen years old, that would be fine?
No, it's usually sixty-five. There's, there's nowhere that's eighteen.
Okay, but you don't know whether it's fifty-five and older, sixty-five and older, this is your facility?
Yeah, six, six, to my understanding, it's, it's sixty-five, but that's why we bring, uh, Mr. Vogel, helped us run the traps on the real estate, and then we have licensing attorneys that help us on that. So sixty-five is my understanding, but um, I would lean on the licensing attorney to help with that.
Is the licensing attorney going to be testifying?
Uh, you'll have to ask Mr. Vogel, he's lined up the witnesses.
Well, here's my problem, Mr. Stretch, you are the, um, you are the, um, primary witness for this application that's put, that's seeking to put in a facility for assisted and senior care and independent living, and don't you have a minimum policy as to age that you will not admit somebody under a rental agreement less than fifty-five, less than sixty-five, how about forty-five?
Yeah, as I said, there's, the, under the lease agreement, once that gets, uh, formalized, uh, it, it will have a, an age that's there if it's regu, if it's listed in, uh, local regulations. So our, our licensing lead is on our team, is Director of Clinical Compliance, and so all, all of those things, once a project gets approved, gets written into the lease.
Well, Mr. Stretch, in the state of New Jersey, when it comes to independent living, there is no age minimum or maximum.
Hmm.
So if I am twenty-five years old and I can afford a house or a condominium or an independent facility, am I going to be allowed to go under a lease contract with you and your facility to live there?
The original question was premised to the witness on the assisted living units. If you're now switching to independent, make it clear, but don't try and confuse the board or any of the public that you're mixing the independent and the assisted. Be careful. If you're asking now about the independent, uh, units, make it clear about the difference between the, the assisted living and the independent living.
Okay, let's talk about independent living. Is there an age minimum, yes or no?
Um, is there an age limit in independent living?
Yes.
Or the, a minimum age? Um, we typically don't write minimum ages into those, um, independent living because they're unlicensed product, so.
So theoretically, if I'm a forty-five-year-old guy and I want to live there, you would write me a lease?
Um, if you were a forty-five-year-old guy, we look at, uh, make sure they have a clear understanding of who would be living there, what their neighbors were, services that they would be wanting to come in. Typically, those people don't, um, apply to live inside of independent living because it's priced, um, pretty significantly higher than, uh, market rate apartments and other rentals uh, because of the services that come with those independent living, so.
But my question still stands, you'd consider a forty-five-year-old?
Um, they're, they're geared towards people that are, um, in the age bracket that we discussed the last time that we talked about, so would we consider it? We have a conversation. Um, and so, uh, we honestly, we haven't had a forty-five-year-old come into our independent living and ask, so, you know, the heart behind the project, and I think we talked about this last time, is that people can live in the neighborhood that they grew up, so, uh, you're asking about something I would make a, we, we would, we would discuss it as it came up, so, um, do, do you aim, or is that, where's the question coming from, or maybe add more color?
Well, my question is simply, what is your age limit, and apparently you don't have one for independent living, and I'll accept that as an answer, that's fine. Is there an age limitation as to assisted living?
Yeah, like I said, there's local regulations, um, that, that come with that, so.
Okay, are you familiar with the assisted, assisted living regulations of the state of New Jersey?
Yeah, just to be clear on, on assisted living, we've never had anyone below the age of fifty-five live inside of, uh, any, and I guess coming up on twelve years, um, live in one of our assisted living communities, so I don't know if that gives more clarity.
Well, yeah, I mean, let, let me ask you this, Mr. Stretch, would you be surprised that in the state of New Jersey, at least as far as the administrative code is concerned and the standards for licensure of assisted living residences, there is no age limitation?
Could you ask the question again?
Would you be surprised that under the administrative code, state of New Jersey and the standards for licensure of assisted living facilities, there is no age limitation?
Uh, that would be unusual compared to most of the other states that we've operated in, and again, the, the target here is to first go with code and uh, regulations, and then from there build out, um, the policy and procedures that are appropriate, so. Again, the target for all marketing, the target for the, the community is, uh, independent living, assisted living, and memory care community, so.
Okay, but you don't have an age limitation that you can express to this board or to the community right now as to either assisted or independent living, correct?
Yeah, the, the heart behind the project, I keep going back to that, is that, uh, we're living right in the fabric of the neighborhood, and so the, what you're going to see is, um, a group of older adults that are wanting to live in the, right in the heart of where they've always lived, so.
That's fair enough, Mr. Stretch, now let me ask you this, let's say I'm a, a sixty-five-year-old man and I'm married, and I want to downsize, um, and I want to buy two-unit independent cottage, or, excuse me, I strike that, rent a two-unit, two-bedroom unit independent cottage with my wife. If I have a son who's in his thirties, could he live with me?
Uh, no, we have, um, yeah, we, we, uh, when those come in, there's often a second person fee, and it's usually a, a, um, a spouse that's coming in to live with them. And, and so, um, in all the years that we've run in, uh, our communities, we haven't had a thirty-year-old live inside of our communities unless there was some sort of medical condition, um, that was, was allowed for within regulations, and they were the primary caregiver that wanted to come in, so.
So let's say I'm a thirty-year-old primary caregiver for my father who's now renting a, uh, independent, um, cottage. I'd be allowed to do that, correct?
Uh, just to restate the question, if you, you were a thirty-year-old caregiver that was caring for your father, uh, and you wanted to be there all day to care for him?
Uh-huh, and live with him.
Oh, of course you would be there to care for your father.
So what if I, uh, wanted to do that and care for my father, but I also had a child?
Uh, no, we wouldn't, we don't have children that live inside of our communities. There's never been a time we've had a child that lived inside of our community.
Is there anything that prevents that?
Is there anything that prevents it? I, I would have to consult our, our, if we have anything that's true, because frankly, the situation hasn't been presented, so, um, I would talk to our Director of Clinical Compliance on that.
Well, if it's an independent cottage, does clinical compliance mean anything?
Yeah, com- compliance is, is the portion of her title that covers that.
Okay, that's an internal designation.
She usually works, sorry, go ahead.
A clinical, clinical compliance kind of indicates something to do with healthcare, but if it's an independent cottage where there is no healthcare being provided, what kind of guidance would you expect from compliance?
Yeah, just to give a, a, I don't, I don't know how much background you have in senior living, just to give more of a broader scope, a broader, uh, stroke on the independent living. Um, because it's unlicensed product, uh, care is not delivered, um, from the operator, and, and so what ends up happening is because most of the folks that are moving in are older adults, uh, their children, uh, loved ones, friends are often in their home, uh, many hours a day, it's, it's their home, and so who they want to invite in their home, it's their choice to do that, and so just like, you know, any of the folks that are on the call tonight, if you wanted to have your grandkid come over and spend the night, they're going to have their grandkid come over and spend the night.
How about their grandchild live with them? Can their grandchild live?
Say it one more time, you broke up.
Can their grandchild live with them?
Yeah, again, uh, never been presented with the scenario where we've had a child, um, and so I'd have to talk to our Clinical Compliance Director, but, uh, again, I'm wondering where the scenarios are coming up from because we're, we're talking about a senior living community. Why are we talking about children?
Here it is, Mr. Stretch, you're looking for a D variance to place into the middle of a residentially zoned neighborhood, a facility that encompasses, as you indicate, assisted living, memory care, and independent living. And I'm trying to figure out who in fact is going to be allowed to live there and what the population is going to look like, or possibly could look like.
And, yeah, so maybe, that, that's good, good context, and, and the, you know, tens of thousands of residents we've had in our communities and the thirty-nine ground-up developments, we've never had a child that lived inside of our buildings. So I, I don't know a better way to, to say that, so.
Are you familiar with the fact that children now often live with their grandparents for various reasons?
I, I would hope if it's a safe living environment that, that, that opportunity is available for any child, yeah.
Okay, so there's, it's a possibility that you could have children living there?
Again, I don't know, understand the, the line of questioning, and I'm going to lean back, and we've never had that scenario in the tens of thousands of, of apartments that we've had, so.
Fair enough, Mr. Stretch, I'll take, I'll take that as your answer. Um, you're not actually saying that this is a continuing care facility, is it?
I, I don't know how you're defining continuing care facility. Uh, typically, the industry uses the designation CCRC, which is a Continuing Care Retirement Community. And to fall into that designation, there's a portion of skilled nursing facility, uh, which is like a skilled nursing and rehab. So, uh, by the, by that definition, this is not a continuing care retirement community.
Okay, that's fine, so that's not any type of license that you get from the state?
We, we are, we will not have a skilled nursing facility here.
Okay. Um, I'm going to now, and it's very difficult because I don't have the ability to hand you a document, but I'm going to actually read something off your website that was taken in May, and I'm going to read it directly to you, this is coming from your website, Thrive Senior Living, and I'm just going to read it, and then I'm going to ask you some questions about it. Independent living. You may walk in and see a group of young moms huddled in a cozy booth, coffee in hand, soaking in the wisdom of one of our residents as they share how to win at parenting. Around a nearby table, you may see a group of young ambitious business people sharing a beer with several Thrive residents helping refine a business plan. At its core, Thrive Independent Living is about building community. We believe it is more than cocktail hours and fine dining. It's about being known and knowing others. Our residents are often looking to downsize or find a closer knit community of friends. With that said, we never forget that we do make a killer martini that sets the stage for a perfectly grilled steak. And that's nice, now, also on this website, you talk about.
Uh, Mr. Bryce, you just broke up that last sentence, you said also on this website, and then you went dark for a second.
I'm just, you know, you, you talk about your community, and you talk about cocktail hours and fine dining as you go through there, but I, you know, the point being, and just looking at what I just read you, in this facility, you're going to be having dining, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's going to be fine dining restaurant quality, I would assume.
Uh, there's a couple of different options, so from that all the way to more casual options.
Okay, now, it, in, the, the statement that I read from the website implicates that people from outside of the community are welcomed in to use the facilities at the Thrive community, is that correct?
Um, the residents that live there can, again, the, the goal is, uh, for them to live, uh, their life and invite their friends, uh, connections that they made from, whether it's a, um, social group, a faith-based group, whatever it might be, that it's a place that they have amenities that they could invite friends over like you would at your home, so.
Okay, so can young moms go there and just order coffee if they'd like to without knowing a Thrive resident?
So, a- answer it with a live example, our, our community down in Savannah that just opened has a hundred units of independent living and only fifty units of assisted living and memory care, so I use that as an example because it's, um, it, it's, it's more geared towards this independent living question that you're asking. And, and so there's a group of residents, I'd say the average age is mid-seventies, and they've started kind of an angel coaching network, and so there's four or five retired executives, and they want to give back to the community and not kind of fade away in society, so they, they've kind of done a little bit of grassroots marketing, and they've got young, uh, kind of entrepreneurs that are coming up and meeting in the, in the lobby and the kind of area where they're grabbing coffee, and I think it's once every two weeks or once every three or four weeks, uh, they're meeting up with this kind of, uh, angel group for coaching, so I think that probably best summarizes, um, what, you know, a scenario that that might happen.
Okay, okay, um, let's say that you're going to have a resident, I'm sorry, excuse, excuse me, strike that, a restaurant on the facility. Is that restaurant going to be open to the public to come in and have a meal?
Yeah, the, the restaurant is, uh, a resident-facing amenity, and, and you know, when we first, um, yeah, we've, we've, we've been meeting with you guys for a really long time and are, are excited about the opportunity and appreciate how thorough it's been. Uh, but our original intention here was, uh, something that was geared more towards an intergenerational, open, uh, community of the public to really be, become a hub of activity. And as we started getting feedback, um, for instance, we originally had, uh, a daycare onsite, um, that was geared towards, uh, folks that work there because sometimes they have a hard time finding childcare. Um, and, and there were amenities that were like that that would potentially be open, um, and, and basically created more for the public. Um, a- as we started looking at regulations and local licensure, realized that, um, Parsifaline wasn't going to be a good fit for that. And so this specifically geared, and that may be where your questions are coming from, because when we met with people locally, uh, early on, those were a lot of our discussion points, so, uh, you can notice in the, our original plan, there was, uh, you know, childcare area and things like that, all of that's been scripted out, and the focus of the amenities is to create a great life for the, you know, the residents that are there, which is why we have a kind of golf cart circling around, so, uh, the, the, the focus of the community is, uh, independent living, memory care, and assisted living, um, uh, living options for, for older adults, so. Does that give good color, uh, Mr. Bryce?
It gives me color, but I don't know if it gives me an answer. Are other people going to be allowed to utilize facilities, yes or no?
Yes, they will when they're invited by one of our residents, so if someone invites a friend over and they wanted to stay and eat, then again, it's their friends, we, we would want them to stay and fellowship with their friends.
Understood, so, better team user, are you going to be having alcohol service at this particular facility?
Uh, alcohol service, our residents are allowed to, you know, have, um, their alcohol, some of our communities have uh, serve beer and wine out of a bar area, um, a- according to local regulations and licensure, so, um, we have some places that we operate where those aren't, um, actually, the majority of the communities that we have have, uh, bar, uh, serve beer and wine, um, to residents once they get the local licensure approved.
Okay, and do you plan on having such a facility here at this Thrive community?
Uh, for, for residents, yeah, so if they want to go, uh, grab a glass of wine after their dinner, then they'll be more than, uh, we'll be more than happy to serve that.
Okay. Now, you, just following up on something that you said, you had a lot of discussions with you, you, you folks. What discussion, who did you have discussions with before this application?
Uh, we had a little, um, kind of town hall, just to kind of share with folks, uh, what we were doing and, and seek feedback, and I think some original renderings, uh, that we'd done. Um, and we had a, a good number of folks that, that came out, um, to that. And, and then I've, I've been up there so much, every time, whether it's coffee shops, or I think Great Wazoo, or just asking, talking to neighbors about things that they like about local senior living communities and what they've done with their older, um, parents, so, um, there's some organic and some formal.
Okay, Mr. Stretch, thank you for your time, I have no further questions of you at this point.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bryce.
I have another question, Mr. Stretch. Age-restricted communities, um, can, in the state of New Jersey, as far as I know, restrict, uh, children under the age of eighteen from, from living in the community? I know this because I have a house in an age-restricted community. Wouldn't you just put that into your, uh, agreement that, uh, children or grandchildren under the age of eighteen could not live in the facility?
Yeah, again, it's not something we've discussed, uh, internally, and so could we, sure, we, we could definitely write that in, if that was something that was deemed appropriate. Uh, again, our, our heart behind why we started the company a decade ago is that, you know, we would allow older adults to continue to live, as maybe they needed some additional health concerns to, to live in community with family and friends, and so, um, having been presented with a scenario where someone wanted to move a child into the building, um, but it Uh, but if it was, uh, what was appropriate to, you know, have something written in that was no one under eighteen, then that's going to make a ton of sense.
I want to circle back to the wine and beer. Would it be your intention to seek some sort of club license for the facility? I don't know how familiar, I don't know how familiar you are with the state of New Jersey and liquor licenses and things like that. Would, have you looked in at all to what it would take to get a license to serve beer and wine? Or are you just?
Yeah, we usually want. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Ms. Joe.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we usually, uh, I think your question is, do we know if we're going to serve beer, wine, or, uh, um, liquor license? We don't usually have a liquor license inside our communities, but beer and wine, uh, we just go through that process and it's usually after, um, we start the design of the community and get approved. So, um, again, I couldn't speak to that right now, but the end desire is there's a bar area for residents to come, um, have a kind of cocktail hour and those kind of things that were outlined by Mr. Bryce and that off the website.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement real fast and I apologize?
Go ahead, Mr. Bryce.
Um, Chairman, just as to the, uh, age-restricted units, wait, I think that you're going to find in most age-restricted units is that as a matter of a deed restriction, uh, that encompasses the entire community, there are limitations as to age. This proposal does not include any type of deed restriction. This is simply going to be regulated.
This is not a question. I have a witness on the stand. If you want to make a summation statement, Mr. Chairman, that should come later. Whenever he's prepared to present, uh, the culmination of his case.
I agree, Mr. Vogel. I'm sorry, I got, uh, side, I got surprised on that. I thought Mr. Bryce was heading toward a question.
Well, I do have.
God, if you have a question, go ahead and ask the question. I think the, it's the applicant's, uh, uh, requirement to come up with all the age restriction or whatever else is involved in this property.
Yeah. Well, Chairman, here's the other issue, and it was an issue that was brought up back in January of two thousand and twenty. Um, there is the case.
Chairman, Mr. Bryce is attempting to take over. We have a witness here. He asked the questions. He completed his questions. I suppose if he's got a, a, a question which he omitted and would like to come back, that might be appropriate, but to make a statement now at this point would be inappropriate.
Well, well, here it is, Mr. Vogel. From my correspondence of January fourteen, two thousand and twenty, I brought to your attention the case.
Here we go, Mr. Chairman. He just keeps listening. He just keeps talking. He doesn't abide by the rule. He ascribes to himself the right to say whatever he wants.
Well, frankly, Mr. Vogel is jurisdictional for this board. And in the case, Pond Run Watership Association, Township of Hamilton.
Mr. Bryce, Mr. Bryce.
Keeps on going.
Excuse me.
He's got, he has the opportunity.
Mr. Bryce.
To make whatever statement he wants. He doesn't have the opportunity to take over the hearing.
Mr. Vogel, Mr. Bryce, Mr. Bryce, with regard to, you know, case law, that probably should be brought uh, up in your case in opposition. Um, at this point, all we're, all we're doing is we're asking questions of, uh, Mr. Vogel's, uh, witnesses. And as Mr. Vogel has stated, he has other witnesses that hopefully will be able to, um, answer some of your questions. But again, when it's your turn to present your case, you'll be able to bring all this out. Is that fair? So we can move on?
That's fine, Mr. That's fine, Mr. King. I was just bringing up the fact that they didn't notice for any type of bar, which has been deemed as a jurisdictional defect, uh, by the appellate division. So if that being said.
I understand that, but again, that, and I, again, I think they're well aware of that, or they should be. Um, and you could bring that out on your case. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. King.
Any other members of the board have any questions to follow up after hearing the questions by Mr. Bryce? Is there any other follow-up questions by the board?
Yes, I do, um, Mr. Chair. Um, in your testimony, I've heard a lot about, you know, what's in the heart in regards to the, uh, the mission of your proposed development. My question is, out of all the developments that you have, you have never had an incident whereby some of the residents attempted to move in somebody who was who was younger, again, whether they be a child or maybe that thirty-year-old that Mr. Bryce spoke about, uh, trying to move in with their elderly parents. I mean, you've never, you've never had an issue in regards to that, to find a need to make this a more common practice to write in, whether it be a lease or in a deed restriction or anything like that. You've had no incident. Am I getting that correct?
Yeah, I heard you ask a couple of questions there, so I'll just try to break up. And then if I miss one, just, um, ask me again and I'll try to speak to it. Um, in regards to children, uh, again, nothing to my knowledge that we tried to move a child in. And just to give you, um, I'm for, for kids, uh, that I have all between twelve and sixteen. And so I, I think I'm pretty connected with what happens with children. If someone moves a pet into our community, we have an interview with the pet to make sure it's appropriate for the larger community. And so, um, it has to be less than a certain amount of weight. We have to actually play with the dog and make sure that it's friendly with strangers. And so we haven't been presented with a scenario because, again, kids are all over, all over the map, um, with how they present. So I imagine that would have hit my desk. So to say that we've never had it, a local community, it didn't get elevated, it's uh, zero to my knowledge that we've had a child that's tried to move in. And again, I've done a lot of these. I've never been asked so much about, about children. Um, but again, our hope is that, uh, these grandparents are interacting with all their family as often as possible.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is, is that for people, uh, for landlords and owners who own multi-unit uh, complexes, I mean, there's, there's standard practices and protocol and, and, and templates, statutes and limitations within their leases that basically prevent the leasing from, um, having an overnight guest that just stays forever or sublets their apartment and everything like that. You mean to tell me that these leases don't have any type of protections such as that, so that a resident can't take advantage or find huge loopholes to be able to move somebody in?
Yeah, I was speaking in regards to children. I'll come back. There have been, there have been times for sure where we've had um, an adult child that unfortunately may have been taking advantage of a parent, um, trying to, you know, live and saying that they're up there to care. And so after they've been there for a couple of days, usually we were able to see them or they're joining them uh, for meals. And it usually turns into some sort of, uh, sit-down and trying to help define the relationship. And inside of the lease, uh, once it's written according to local regulations, those things are outlined for adults. I apologize. I thought, Ms. Snyder, I thought you were talking about little children still.
Well, I, while we were, it was in the context of little children, but then it talked about the thirty-year-old and everything like that. And I'm just, I, you know, my concern, based on your testimony, is that, that this lease is not airtight to protect this proposed application from being what it's being represented at this time. That's, that's basically where my questions go.
Would you, I can speak to that if you'd like. The questions that were asked to me, not in regards to our lease, at least the way that I heard them, they were asked into what's usually happening or what we believe will happen. And so, um, we're happy to submit. Um, again, we're nearing opening up in northern New Jersey. And if you'd like a copy of the lease that we worked with the local township there, um, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's thick. So, uh, I don't think that would be a concern. That's a different line of questioning than what I was asking earlier. It was more of what we believe will happen rather than what would be docked up, so.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
It might be helpful if we had a copy of a formal lease, uh, so that we could, we could see what, maybe get some insight as to, uh,
Sure.
I just made it out to myself, uh, to obtain a copy of a form of a lease and provide it to the board at the next meeting.
And Mr. Vogel, that's just, Mr. Vogel, that's, that's just an example of a lease in another site. It's not the proposed lease for this site. Is that correct?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, it would be one from another site, but it would be typical of what Thrive would use. There have none been specifically for this site. But, uh, I, I will, I will obtain a lease and I'll provide it to, uh, uh, through Ms. Joe Lee to the board before the next meeting.
Thank you.
And to be clear, every time we've done these, um, you guys are going to give us feedback. It's your township. We're trying to uh, come into the community and, uh, continue the, whatever traditions have been there. So if you guys said that we wanted to have something in the lease that was a fifty-five and up restriction or those type of things, we're more than happy to walk through all that stuff. And, and so we are, we have a kind of a boilerplate lease agreement that canvases all the major topics. And, um, and as you guys go through that, we almost always have some sort of feedback on it. And, um, we, we adjust because each, uh, location has their own nuances, depending on the side of the country that we're, we're building, so.
Mr. Stretch, did you say that there's a facility opening up in New Jersey?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, it's under construction right now up in Montvale, uh, by the New York border.
Oh, and when do you expect that to open?
Um. End of February, uh, right around, um, beginning of March. So we're, what is that, like six or seven months away?
Okay. I just thought if it was nearing, uh, completion, it might be a good thing for us to independently take a ride up and see what it was all about.
That'd be a tremendous joy to, uh, to you guys up there. I'd be more than happy to walk through and explain how we're doing things.
Well, I don't know how formal we can make it, especially since I don't think we can have more than two members that are tied up. So, but that's something we'll deal with down the road.
Understood.
Can I jump in a second? There's three different rental products, so you need three different leases.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if that was a question or a statement.
I think it's, I think it's a statement. You said you would provide the lease, but you have three different products. So I assume it's three different leases.
Yeah, again, that varies by local, um, and so one is a canvas and then one is broken up exactly like you're saying. So uh, we would provide whatever is asked of us in regards to that.
You said you had all those products in Montville, so it must have some leases.
Yeah. Our operations lead coordinates that, and we're actually finalizing, uh, those and trading it back and forth with the township up there right now.
Any other questions by the board?
I'd like to, I'd like to continue along this line. So, thank you. In regards to your other developments that are fully developed and being rented.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do you have stipulations in place that carry out strict age requirements as it relates to, you know, uh, residents being able to be there?
Yeah, most of them do. Yes, most of them do.
And so what, what age limit is that for your other developments?
Uh, some of them are sixty-four and a half, uh, some of them are sixty-five, and some of them are fifty-five. So again, this goes back to what I said earlier.
Right. And, and does that vary depending on whether they're getting a cottage versus, uh, an assisted living unit versus what other, uh, unit you have? I forgot the terminology to it.
Independent.
In, in.
Independent, yeah. So does that vary, those leases, like the age limits? So a cottage, you could be whatever, you could be fifty-five. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, usually it's one blanket, uh, age across the board. And the memory care area is less to do with, um, because it's a uh, usually a diagnosis that causes a need for that. Um, it's not as much age-specific. And so, yeah, to your point, it's, it's usually an age that blankets across. And in my original testimony, if you go back to that, I kind of gave you guys the, the targets across, um, all of them. Um, who, who the target, uh, resident, each of the three living types are.
Yeah, you did. But at the same time, I think we discussed this in our last meeting. You also you alluded to the fact that if somebody was sick of, you know, cutting their lawn, they too are eligible. And again, I kind of mentioned it, uh, in my line of questioning in the last, either the meeting last or, no, it was the last meeting because you're the test, you were testifying. So, right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holler, any questions? Mr. Travis, any questions? Okay, I'll open it up to, um, members of the public. I'm going to caution you that if you are presently represented by Mr. Bryce, you cannot, uh, ask a question. You have to defer that to Mr. Bryce. Uh, I have a list, uh, a list of names that dates back to May twentieth. Mr. Bryce, I don't know if that list has grown since then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's the up-to-date list that I have is the one that I sent.
All right. So Nora, if you don't have a list, if you tell me who, who it is, I'll tell you if they're on my list or not.
I did find my list. I'm just double checking. Okay, um, I see, uh, Mr. Homiak's hand up. Nick, can you hear us? Nick? Nick needs to be unmuted.
Nick is unmuted.
His little mute thing is on. All right. Nick, you should be able to speak.
Uh, Nick, once you can, uh, speak and you can unmute yourself, please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, we can come back to Nick though. Hold on one moment. I see a Robert Asaro's hands up, but, uh, Robert, you are not able to speak as you're being represented uh, by Mr. Bryce. So you can please put your hand down. Nick, if you can hear us, you're up.
Nick is unmuted right now.
Okay, I don't, then he's just having problems. I'm just looking to see if, uh, the next person is on this list or not. It's a Pamela McDonald. If you want to help me. Look, Chairman.
Did you say Tom O'Conner?
McDonald. I don't think, I don't think I see her on the list.
Nope, I don't see her.
Pamela, if she fell off, let's go to the next person.
Okay.
Pamela, you there?
I'm here.
Ma'am, if you could, uh, state your name and your address for the record, and then you could ask your questions. And remember that you have to ask questions, not make statements. There'll be time to do that later, okay? Go ahead, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. Um, Les, how many, out of all the developments that you have built, how many of the, how number of those developments required a change in zoning?
Before you answer, Pam, can we please have your address?
Yes, on eleven Fieldcrest Road on the corner of Fieldcrest and two oh two.
And repeat your question, please.
Yes. Out of all your developments, how many of those developments required a change in zoning before you were able to build?
Um, I don't know the exact number. Like I said, we've.
Know the exact number. That, that's a very important question.
Well, I apologize to not have the answer for you, but I, we've had a, um, a large number of our developments that have had to be rezoned. And, um, I couldn't speak to, uh, the exact number. I'd have to talk to the head of our development team.
Who told you that you were able to rezone in Parsippany? In other words, who invited you up here to say, okay, fine, come on up, present your development, and we can change. In other words, who invited you up here to say, okay, fine, come on up, present your development, and we can change the zoning? Somebody must have told you.
With due respect, Ms. McDonald, you're barking up the wrong tree here. They don't come here and talk about having the property rezoned. They are coming for a variance, a zone variance, which we give them to-
Okay, fine, it's still, right now, the variance, I know what it is.
Can I finish what I'm saying, please?
Well, fine.
They propose, they can propose things, they don't need to go to anybody, they can go to people that talk to it, but they can just come in and propose a project that requires a variance. That's why the zoning board of adjustment hears these cases, okay?
Okay, fine, so the variance needs to be changed from residential to multi-identity. Who told you it could be done?
Ms. McDonald, don't you understand? No one told them that it can be done, maybe they're a territory-
Well, you have a, like, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Arcane, but I mean, it's a question that I think needs to be answered. When we have developers coming here who need to change a variance, they're here for a reason. They don't come because they say, well, you know, I can change the variance, or no, I can't change-
McDonald, I'm going to have Mr. Hocker mute you if you don't stop, okay? Now, they don't come and ask somebody what you're explaining, okay? They can request a variance by making an application, coming to this board, they don't have to talk to anybody to do that. They may have done that as an accommodation to determine if there's a need or to get the feeling of how the people will react, okay? So go on with your questioning now, please.
Okay. All right, you were talking about all these people coming in with children or people, kids moving in, et cetera, et cetera. Regarding the ten percent or whatever percentage it is for low-income housing, which has to be part of this development, is there any range, age restrictions or number of people who could live in those apartments?
Were you making a comment that I was talking about younger, that was Mr. Bryce's line of question?
No, no, I am talking about the low-income apartments.
The, we-
By the state. Do we have any, there's any restrictions on who could live in there?
Yes, ma'am, they, they have to abide by the same, people that move into the affordable portion of the community and people that move into the market rate portion of the community are treated equally.
So in other words, all the low-income families mandated by the state, it has to be people over fifty-five?
Yeah, they have to be, they have to be Medicaid qualified, so it couldn't be a young person.
Okay. Let's see now. Right now, I don't have any other questions at the moment, but I will have in the future.
That's great, I appreciate the questions.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
Yes, or is Nick, I don't know if you are able to pick your problem, can you unmute yourself? Nick?
Hi. I'm unmuted. Hello?
Nick, just for the record, your name and your address, and then you can ask your questions, we can hear you.
I, for example, I'm a seventy-one-year-old man. I make about thirty-five thousand dollars net in my pension. I have Medicare. Would I be allowed to live in one of your places?
There is no not allowed, if you're seventy-one and live on Medicare, again, the affordable rate gets worked out with the state and kind of where that pegs against. And so we haven't gotten that far down, and so my heart is, I'd love to meet you and hope you can live there.
Well, I'd rather not, but my point is the public need. And I believe that you said your rates were between five to nine thousand dollars a month? And what component of your development requires that high income?
Yeah, that's market, that's market rates. If you look around the senior living communities and kind of Parsippany and the abutting communities for market rate senior living, that's in that same window.
All right, but wouldn't a market rate contradict a public need?
No, when you say a public need.
Assistant housing or older people need to live somewhere, but they don't because of the economy and they may not have the adequate savings to afford your fees. So it would be not in a, not a public need, but a speculation need that you're basing your development on, that you could sustain it through people with higher incomes. The point is that the public need, the public need is a fallacy.
Do you have a question or are you making a statement?
Well, my question was, could I live there? And the other, I guess my contention, it could be a question is, where is the public, how is the public need satisfied to warrant a rezone? To change the character of this neighborhood and to rezone? Where is the public need?
Nick, I don't believe that this witness would answer that, I'm sure there's going to be a planner who's going to put all that on. So again, I'm not the attorney for the applicant, but there may be another witness that would be able to answer this question for you.
Okay, because, yeah, my, my question was, a person such as me with a lower income, I guess I'd have to look elsewhere.
No, just to answer the question, as Mr. Stretch said, the affordable beds, which under the housing plan for Parsippany, there is a quotient required from this project and those beds will be allocated to people who are Medicaid eligible. That is the law, so if this gentleman qualified as Medicaid eligible, he then would be able to get a bed in the facility.
He'd be put on a list and then, and then there's usually a list, isn't there, Mr. Vogel?
There is, there's a list and the state, and by the way-
Mr. Vogel, can I interrupt for a second? You, it's, you're making it more complicated than necessary. You've agreed that you have a twenty percent set aside. Certain units, the assisted living require for their license to have ten percent Medicaid eligible. The other percent will come under the rules of basically their HUD rules. The town adopted them as part of their settlement, and that sets the income limits.
That's correct. And Parsippany has an administrator with which we have to file before we open. We have to advertise consistent with the regulations. A list is performed and the administrator on behalf of Parsippany oversees that and monitors it to make sure compliance is kept current.
So do you, so I have a question, do you get to choose what people move into the units in the co-units?
They do. The, there's a township administrator who will be involved in both the marketing and the setting the eligibility of the persons that apply. And those persons then are given to the developer in this, this project. And they can do a credit check on them. And otherwise, the person would be then eligible to rent. No, no difference to a regular apartment complex. You come in, you do a credit check, and that's it.
So that means that they could guarantee somebody who's living in the, in the development that doesn't need assistance and doesn't qualify, that if money runs out at some point, they could then definitely get a bed if available in the low-income-
We haven't even got to what their policy is on a renter in a independent living facility. They're going to be, if they don't pay their rent. If they're in an assisted living or a memory care, that's a different story.
Mr. Chadwick, right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next to you with questioning?
Is the zoning board aware that there's a senior, a senior home right in Pompton, Pompton, New Jersey here? Pompton Plains, Cedar Crest.
I don't, I don't understand the question, Mr. Homiak, what's the question, why are you asking us this question?
The question, the question was to the zoning board, are they aware that there is a senior home called Cedar Crest and right in Pompton Plains?
Yes, we're well there.
Okay.
I'm sure we're all aware of that, it's a very, very expensive community.
It's a long time.
So we're going to have another expensive one, okay?
Any other questions, Mr. Homiak?
No, sir.
Nora, you got anybody else?
Of course. Cheryl Romantionis, you can unmute yourself.
And again, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and you can ask your questions, questions only.
Can we unmute Cheryl?
Okay, Cheryl Ramanchanas, forty Holly Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. What's the maximum occupancy of the residents based on the number of units? Are they all single occupancy for the independent, the cottages, and the memory care?
So, we'll, sorry. Can you go ahead and answer that?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, as was outlined earlier, there'll be fifty-six memory care units, which will be single-story wood frame construction on the backside, fifty apartments inside of assisted living, and then each one of those beds are single occupancy is, that's our regulatory requirement. And then there'll be the independent living cottages that we've been talking about.
And the independent living cottages, what's the number of people that can live there? Is that double occupancy or is that just single?
No, some of them are two-bedroom, so most of the folks that lease those will either use one side as a room and the other as their little office, or sometimes they move in as a married couple or friends.
So is it more than two then, or is it, it has a maximum of two in the cottages?
Our lease usually outlines that their maximum, and in most local regulations, it's maxed at two for the two bedrooms. Yeah, I think FIRE does as well, so again, that's, goes by local regulations, but all three of those would limit, so.
So they're all, so the only one that's double occupancy is the cottages, correct?
No, I think there's two bedrooms, I'd have to pull the plans up, inside of the assisted living apartments, there's a couple of those. And so those two bedrooms with two beds obviously are what they're intended for. Yeah, there's ten, ten two-bedroom units on the second floor, so there'd be, and then two two-bedroom units scheduled now on the other, so. There'd be two residents in those rooms if they'd like, or they would just leave the extra one, as some do, lease it and use it as like an office or another sitting room.
By lease, do you, do you mean to the person who's living there, correct? Not a sublease?
I say lease, but it's, no, 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 not sublease, I'm talking about a rental, just using the words interchangeably, sorry to confuse you.
No, it's okay. Um, in the previous night, you had said that ninety percent of the residents live within a five to ten mile radius of their former community and that you didn't have any data available for the Montvale community. Do you have any data available now that you're closer to moving in, based on the residents we're moving in? Like how close they're really living to that community, like where their, where their original home was and now they're moving to Montvale? How close in proximity do they really live to that?
Yeah. Just going back to what I said before, I think there was a couple of comments that you made. It varies where people are moving from by community. We've built more destination, this is, this is not that. And so we have a little more than a dozen deposits and we're still seven or eight months out, maybe more now. That was the data as of last week. The majority of those are all from Montvale in Bergen County. You want, I don't have the data in front of me of exactly where they came from, but I've met over half of the depositors there in local Bergen County folks in Montvale, so.
Okay, and then you had also mentioned in your previous testimony, you talked about how the community wouldn't be involved with schools and at Parsippany Hills nearby. Do you have any, like, specific data that you've collected from the previous communities? Like how long these, these programs have been in operation? Like what specifics can you provide us about these programs?
When you say these programs-
Like, meaning like these school programs, like you said that you could have internship opportunities, like a Boy Scout troop could come and visit, do you, do you have any specific data that you could show us that the schools nearby, like how frequent these, these Boy Scout troops are visiting? How frequently members, you know, are doing volunteer work or just interacting with members of the community? Do you have any data to support these like programs with the community other than a description of what could happen? Meaning, like, like where, can you give us specific examples? Like, for example, you know, there was, can you point to a specific community and describe that program and give specifics as to how frequently, like say, the Girl Scouts were coming over? Was it like one time a year, was it once every quarter? You know, could you, like, how long were these programs in operation? Or is this just like pure speculation for like what could happen?
You asked me a couple of questions there, and so I-
So number one, like, I guess my first question is, do you have any data about the programs? Like have you collected any data from your previous communities regarding, you know, the community involvement? Do you collect any sort of data regarding that? Or any sort of like, do you count the number of like groups that have come to the community? Like, I'm asking just for specifics.
Sure. I'm going to take my stab at answering that as best I can, because, and then feel free to give feedback if I'm not answering it. So most senior living communities have a position called activities coordinator, it's very standard. And we call that role social network director. And so when most people leave their longtime residence and move into a senior living community, it feels a lot like the day you walk into middle school and don't know anyone and don't know where to sit. So the job of our social network director is to help them create new meaningful relationships. And so we'll often have groups like the ones that you listed, which are local schools, Girl Scout troops, Boy Scouts, like you mentioned, faith-based organizations that will come by. And a lot of times, it's just the friends of residents that still live in their single-family residence. And so they may look for volunteer opportunities because they want to start a, you know, photography club. Most of those things happen organically. And so as we get to know our residents, you know, we'll find a couple that have two or three used to take photographs recreationally. And so when volunteers come by, we don't just give them something to do, we ask volunteers, hey, what is it that you enjoy? And they may say, well, I enjoy gardening, and we'd say, well, we actually have a couple residents, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Anderson, and they like to garden as well. And so we may connect them to do a little gardening event on a Saturday morning or something. And so just to be clear, there's- And so, um, ju- to be clear, there, there's a person whose job is to help coordinate that. Um, that is the role that I just defined. So those, those programs usually birth organically, um, because of seasons and weather and, and so communities we built in the South um, have a lot more gardening. There's not happening when it's snow on the ground three to four months. So, um, hopefully that answered your question.
Can you, uh, can, can you just give a little more specific as to like how, how long these, these programs have been in operation? It's, it's just, it's just all very general, you know? Um, if, if you have a person who is working with specific groups, certainly they, they can just have like a, a general record, like the Girl Scouts came three times in two years. Just, just something, just so we couldn't have a measure of really the level of participation in the, from outside the, the living community with like the schools.
I'm sure that depends on that location and varies greatly from location to location, but anyway.
And Mr. Mr. Williams, that's, that's where the point I was trying to, to make. I, I may not have made it very clearly, but there's a person's job is as people come in and wanna interact. Um, those programs really develop or organically. Uh, as far as the way we interact with the outer community, um, like a school or a faith-based or a social club or, or something like that. So we, we can't tell them, hey, you need to come in here. They just, when they come by, we have a person whose job's to help make those connections.
So you just, you don't have any like data that you could just, you don't have to tell us which groups came in, tell us their names, but you, you couldn't give us any like numbers as to how frequently, you know, how long a program was in operation? You know, like say the program started two years ago, then the volunteer program started a year after the, the community was started. You, you don't have any measurable sort of data for that? So we could see how, just really the level of involvement, you know, from like the schools in the nearby community? You, nothing on record, basically.
The majority of those are, are project-based and so they'll, they come together and for, you, you've used the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, um, a couple of times. Usually they're project-based and, and so, um, they're coming in and they're doing activities. We've had, uh, from schools, we built across the street from a middle school, as I mentioned on the last call. And, um, they came over and did choir concerts. They would come over and do, uh, band events. Um, they, a couple of the middle schoolers ended up making, um, friends as their parents brought them over. And so they, we, we started a little program like ParaBuddy and, um, they started writing letters to each other. And so again, a lot of it, the heart behind that, the role of Social Network Director is to create uh, more, more meaningful and, and combat a lot of the loneliness that can happen sometimes. So hopefully giving you some concrete examples of things that have happened.
Mr. Just, we just said.
I'm gonna move on.
Can, can you just say that you do not have the information available? And then if you have the information available, you will provide it at the next meeting.
Sounds, yeah, sure.
Okay, um, my, my last question, what, um, how is COVID changed the restrictions at the facilities? Again, um, you know, throughout your entire testimony from the beginning, you've said this, this is gonna be a place where the, the schools are gonna be able to visit, um, families are gonna be able to visit their, uh, their loved ones who are staying at these facilities. Do you have any COVID restrictions right now? Like would schools, like say they wanted to go there and visit the residents, would they be able to do that?
Yeah, it's a great question and it's been a tough year and a half for the industry. Um, and, and so yes, uh, safety is a priority in, in our communities and, um, uh, we go through whether it's contact tracing, work closely with the CDC from the beginning of that. And so, yeah, our communities, if for whatever reason there is a, a case that pops up, then we have the community that doesn't allow outside visitors and all of them have to funnel through a, a main entry point. Um, and so there's been times and seasons through this last year and a half where we've, uh, cut off, um, all visitation completely, including family, just to make sure that it's safe. Um, and, um, a- and we've relaxed that as, uh, things go back to normal life and everyone's been vaccinated. So, um, and again, that varies by community based on how, uh, trends are spiking and again, work closely with the CDC on that.
Um, and I guess my final question is, given the uncertainty of COVID and that this whole, the whole primary reason you picking this location is because it's so centrally located within a community already. But given the uncertainty of COVID and we don't know how long it's gonna last and many of them are heavily restricted now, does this really impact where you're gonna place the facility? If, um, schools are unable to visit there, families are very limited in where they're going? Because again, it's the uncertainty of COVID. So given that this is the, again, this community is being, the, the site is being selected because of where it is in the community. Oh, because of COVID, the, the students are unable to come and visit, even the families are unable to come and visit. Why is it still so critical to be in this location?
Yeah, only when there's a known, uh, COVID case. And, and so we've done, uh, really well, uh, through temperature screening, check-ins. Um, and, and again, staying well-informed and ahead, that our communities have been able to open back up once our residents were able to get vaccinated and, um, minimize a- a- any of the, the ongoing impacts. And, and so th- those, those change and as quickly as we can, we want to relax and when it's safe, uh, for folks to come back in and visit. Um, so, uh, people aren't living alone and segregated from the rest of, of society. So, um, it, it doesn't change at all where we wanna build. I think all of us, just because COVID is an, is an issue, don't wanna go live on the outskirts of town. Um, I think we wanna live in a place that we know is safe and, and that's, that's the overarching concern for us in, in this community will be the residents are able to live safely in community.
Yeah, that's it. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your questions.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bryce, um, offline, I received a message from Mr. Asaro who claims that you do not represent him. I see, uh, Robert and Marie Asaro on your list. Can you confirm that in fact, uh, that you do represent them or not?
Chairman, I'm just taking a look at the list that I provided. Pull it out. Could you spell the last name?
It's six from the bottom. Six, six name from the bottom.
Thank you.
I, I do have them on my list, Chairman.
Then, um, Nora, can you open up Mr. Asaro's, uh, microphone so that he can?
I'm sorry, what was the last name of the person?
Asaro, A-S-A-R-O.
Earl, can you open up Robert Asaro?
Hello?
Robert?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, we can, uh, Mr. Bryce.
Thank you, Mr. Iken.
Yeah, Mr. Bryce says that you're on his list, that you're, that you're represented by him.
Can I, can I ask what constitutes of being on his list?
You gave him some money, I think.
I didn't, I didn't give him money, no. I donated money online on Facebook to a community association. I, I didn't pay Mr. Bryce directly. And I think that's, and I think that's gotta be a matter of difference. I also donate to St. Christopher's Church. So making a donation doesn't constitute him my attorney. I haven't sat with him. I haven't met with him. I don't even know.
Mr. King. Mr. King, can you help me out?
It, it depends on, on the, um, Facebook, if it was to hire an attorney, then that money.
Just for, it just, it didn't say who was hiring for any attorney or anything. It just said donating to a community association, uh, St. Christopher's, uh, project.
And are you a member of that association?
No.
But what constitutes?
Does it? Yeah, does that, let me ask you a question. Does any, does, I assume we have some Catholics on, on, on the board? Do you donate to your churches? If you, then you would have to re-close yourself, would you not?
Sir, sir, no, no. Um, with regard to, uh, this association, how, how did you come by to donate money to it?
I donated money for a sign, for a sign for them.
And, and that's all?
I saw it on Facebook. I donated for, for overdevelopment in Parsippany.
And, okay, Mr. Bryce, do you know anything about this group and how they obtained money to, to, to pay for, I guess, your representing them?
Uh, Mr. King, it, it's just a, a simple non, um, an informal community group. Um, the, Nick Nol, Nick Now, I can't even speak. Nat, Nalpano, uh, can't even get it out, uh, was the organizer. I'm not sure how they did the fundraising.
Well, how did you pick up that list of people on your list?
I asked, um, Nick for the actual list of people that made donations.
Okay, and the, I mean, the, I guess the issue is, is this, this gentleman is saying that he is not, uh, he, I guess he's saying that he does not want you to represent his interest. Is, is there anything that, that he either signed or you signed, uh, with him?
No, my retainer agreement goes for the, uh, Parsip- Parsippany Friends of Greenspace. I have no idea independently what this particular gentleman's relationship is with the Friends of Greenspace.
The Friends of Greenspace, I don't mean to interrupt, but the Friends of Greenspace are here to oppose this application.
Okay, but, but I, I guess the question is, is if that, if that gentleman is a member of that, then, uh, he would be part of that. If, if he's a, a member of that group, then they have an attorney. He would not be able to ask questions. But it seems like that gentleman is saying that he donated money to some Facebook group that was not part of it. So I guess the question is, is how hi- how did his name get on the list of people that Mr. Bryce represents?
He donated to a Facebook group that, that hired Mr. Bryce.
Right, Mr. Napolitano is one of the lead people, you know, of this group. And, um, he, I know he's on, probably on this meeting here tonight.
Oh, but this gentleman who is speaking up.
I haven't been to any meetings for the Greenspace. I haven't been to a meeting. I haven't, the only person I ever met was Mr. Napolitano. I haven't been to any Greenspace meetings. I haven't been, I just donated to a local group of neighbors and that was it. And a, a local group. I donate to everything. I, I belong to the Sons of Italy in town. I donate to the food pantry. I donate to a lot of things in town. That doesn't make me a member.
So Mr. Asaro was saying that, um, Mr. Bryce, you did not represent him.
Did I ever meet you, Mr. Bryce?
No, this gentleman's never met me. I've never had a conversation with him. His name came to me on the list.
Okay, so, so, uh, Mr. Asaro, are you, you do not wanna be represented by, uh, Mr. Bryce?
No, I'm just an independent person, wanna answer questions.
Mr. Chairman, uh, he's, he's not being represented by Mr. Bryce, so we should take his name off the list.
Thank you.
I have a question now, are any of these people represented by Mr. Bryce?
Do I, do I?
If they just made donations to, to what's probably an unincorporated group that probably doesn't even have any, any standing of, of any sort, uh, can we say that any of these people are represented by Mr. Bryce? Mr. King?
Well, I, again, if, if they're members of a group and they've, um, sent money for an attorney so that group or their membership can be represented by Mr. Bryce, then yes, they would, they, there, there was an agreement. Mr. Bryce said, and I haven't seen it, but Mr. Mr. Bryce advises that there's an attorney, um, uh, attorney-client agreement and that attorney-client agreement is with that group and there's a membership of that group. So all those members would be represented by that group. With regard to the last gentleman, he advises that he was not, he is not a member of that group and he just donated money to, um, some Facebook, uh, page, which I, I don't know anything about that Facebook page, but it would seem that, um, he does not wanna be represented. He's not part of that, uh, group and therefore he can ask questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
How about me? Do I, do I get a chance to be heard?
Sure.
Yes, you do.
After me. That's why I get my turn, sir.
I think, I think.
Mr. Vogel's gonna go first.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm, I'm always surprised every time you think you heard everything and you're always surprised by something new that you never heard of comes up. And this is the first time I've done this for a long time that anybody has ever said, I contribute to an organization and I, because I, I, uh, I, I'm in favor of the goals of that organization. The organization then goes out and hires an attorney. And then when there's a hearing, I say, well, even though I contributed uh, to that organization because I'm in favor of what it stands for, the attorney they hired is not my attorney, even though I've supplied money that hired him. That, you know, that, so that if, if you then say, well, then that person can come in as, as this gentleman has said, oh, I never talked to him. I never hired him. Uh, I don't know him. I just gave some money. That means anybody on that list can do the same thing.
Well, Mr. Vogel, I think it's different. I think that gentleman said that he just gave money to a group. He did not give money to a group to hire the attorney and he is not a member of the attorney.
A- and so can everyone on that, same thing.
So, well.
Who chooses.
Well, but, but Mr. Mr. Vogel, don't you think that Mr. Bryce has an obligation to, uh, this board to advise us? And I think he has. I think he advises that he's.
I, I have no quarrel with Mr. Bryce. I think he's been, he's been candid. He told you precisely what he did and he formed and he provided a list that he obtains from the organization and the organization gave Mr. Bryce the list, which indicated those people who contributed money that paid for Mr. Bryce's fee.
Well, that, that, I don't, I, there is nothing, there's nothing, I didn't finish. Okay.
That person can then come in and disavow the attorney, then the whole, the whole aspect of having a list of people that belong to an organization that hires an attorney becomes annulity. You can do whatever you want. Look, I don't wanna argue this longer.
Mr. Vogel, I agree with you 100%. I agree with you 100% and what I, at this point, I would like to, if, if Mr. King is in agreement, I'd like to propose the question to the board and take a vote as to whether we're going to let this list of people uh, ask questions besides Mr. Bryce. Uh, if that's okay with Mr. King, I would like.
What I would suggest is that we get a, a list from that group as to who their membership is. Because Mr. Bryce, Mr. Bryce can't, i- i- unless someone is a member of that group, you, you can't automatically say, Mr. Bryce is their attorney because they donated money. Um, I, I know, I don't have anything before me, nor does, nor do I think Mr. Vogel has anything or has seen anything before him as to, to, as to what that Facebook, uh, page said, as to what the prior gentleman did or didn't do. I, I, as, as, uh, Mr. Arcane, as you pointed out, we don't even know if this alleged community group is a, uh, incorporated group and has bylaws or powers to, to hire an attorney. I, I, as Mr. Bryce said, he does have a, uh, attorney-client agreement with this group. So the next thing you need is a, um, formalized, uh, membership list. And anyone who's a formalized member of that group and/or, um, who specifically, uh, paid money to Mr. Bryce to be represented should not ask any questions because they have an attorney doing that. Now, I know that Mr. Vogel made a statement. I don't know that he has the facts. And I'm not saying what his statement is, is right or wrong, but I don't think he has the facts to support what he's saying in, in, in that's, those statements, in, 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 in the sense that it has not been provided to this board.
Based on what you said, Mr. King, I would request that I would like to see that we table any questions, any of this list of people until we have determined who the members are. We get a membership list. until we have determined who the members are. We get a membership list from the organization. Mr. King, you all right with that?
I, yes, I think it's, I, I think it's extremely important to do that because the other issue we have is if we do not let someone ask a question, it could jeopardize, uh, the applicant's um, application in of itself, uh, and I, I don't think Mr. Vogel.
I will get a lawyer to do that.
That's fine. Um, do I have a consensus in the board that this is the way we should go?
Mr. Chairman.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I make a, make a, a suggestion? I, I.
Yes, Mr. Vogel.
I, all I want to do is put my case on. I want the board to be able to hear the witnesses and, and what we have to say. And I'm not concerned about exposing, um, the witness to some questions. I think it's wrong, but I have no objection if the board would allow Mr. The gentleman, Mr. Uh, Pharoah, whatever's, uh, whatever his name is, I hope I don't mispronounce it, to do his cross-examination and to allow the question about who can sum up be determined in accordance with what, uh, Mr. King has said, uh, we ought to do about disclosing on Facebook. So just to keep it going, maybe we'll spend too much time by having, arguing this. Better off let the, the people ask, even if they've contributed. But when it comes to making a closing statement, by then we should figure out who can speak and who's represented by a lawyer. That's my suggestion.
I, that, and that's what I was trying to do, Mr. Vogel, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so Mr. Vogel is gonna let Mr. Saro go ahead and speak. He just put that on the record. Go ahead, Mr. Saro.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Robert DiSaro. I live at 31 Field Press Road in Parsippany, New Jersey. And the question I have is that the question was asked earlier, did you have to go for any variances? My question would be, was there any variances in an R1 zone? And if you do, how many facilities did you build in R1 zones?
Appreciate the question, Mr. Pharoah. My, my answer's the same as it was earlier. We have a director of development and 39 developments, so I don't know the zoning status of every one of those over the last decade off the top of my head and I, I apologize. Um, there's somebody to lean on to, to lead that portion of the team, so, um, I, I don't, that's, that's the best answer that I have for you, so.
So you don't have the answer to that question?
Y- yeah, I, I gave you the, the answer, um, to the, to the question, so uh, I, I do not know the number off the top of my head, how many times we've had this specific, uh, rezoning process in, in the.
You know of any, do you know of any facilities in our ones?
I, I, I can't.
It's pretty simple. You see one family house out the window right next to the facility, that would be an R1 zone.
That's not a conspiracy, Pharoah, because that, that, uh, house outside the property could also have good, got a variance.
We, we have, yeah.
Mr. Shet, I'm gonna ask you that if you can provide any of this information uh, for the next meeting, will you please provide whatever, uh, data that you can accumulate, okay?
Yeah, and again, I don't know, if, are, are there developments that we've done?
Let me make an observation.
Go ahead.
Please let me make an observation if I can. The question is whether or not, uh, facilities have been erected in an R1 zone. Every municipality in every state have different ordinances and different regulations. In some residential zones, assisted living or, or permitted use. So you don't need a variance. In other, in, in, in other municipalities, an R1 zone may be fa- fashioned with an R2 zone. Um, there may be different requirements in different municipalities and have zones that are wholly different than what's in Parsippany. Every municipality is different. So to get, simply say, what was in an R1 zone? It may not be an R1 zone. It may be, uh.
That's a great point from, from the different places that we've built. For instance, Texas doesn't have any zoning at all and we've bu- built several communities in Texas. So, uh, it varies from, from place to place. I, I, what I heard you say was, have been able to look out and see houses. Yeah, the majority of our communities, you'll, you can look out and see houses. So that, that was the, the heart of your question, then maybe that, that better answers it, Mr. Saro.
Well, it seems to be, Mr. Shet, you have a, a, a large knowledge of uh, these facilities, uh, that are being built across the country. Uh, I don't know how many you have in New Jersey, but you surely are somewhat familiar with the, um, laws in, 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 in the, uh, values of, of the state of New Jersey of properties. Uh, what impact do you think that would have on the value of the homes around that facility once it's built?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that.
Mr. Saro, I don't think that's a fair question. If he's not a real estate appraiser or uh, things like that, it's not a fair question for the applicant.
Does not having an impact is on, on the valuation of homes that people paid for is not a fair question? I'm sorry, I'm a little lost there.
He cannot, I did not say whether the question was fair or not fair. I said, he's not in a position to answer the question. He's not qualified.
Well, if he's getting some research about what's in R1 zones, I would like to know what impact that had on those homes after they put the facilities in those areas.
But, but, but he's not, he, he's not qualified to give that. He's not a, a praiser. He doesn't, he doesn't know that. He can't give that. There may be another witness that will be able to answer that question, but he, he, he can't answer that question.
Okay. Uh, on, on, on the order of, uh, I asked this question once before to someone else and I was told that he wasn't the one to answer it, but I heard that this gentleman said that we're gonna have some restaurants, various levels. Uh, you can have a steak, you could have a hamburger, and have spare ribs. How do you control the odors from those restaurants emulating into the neighborhoods?
The odors? In all the communities?
Food, the food odors when you cook. You know, you vent it out. How do you control it?
Yeah, I wouldn't be the one to speak to how venting's done, but if, if it's, if it's a worry that you're bringing it up, the communities we've built, we haven't had any complaints of, of odors. Um, but we have, uh, people that are queued up to, for testimony that could speak with much more, you know, specificity on that.
Who has to do the impact study on the traffic that it's gonna cause by putting an exit on 202 where we already have a problem? Does, is that our responsibility as residents? Or is that your responsibility as a developer wanting to put the, uh, facility there?
Yeah, we have a traffic consultant that's queued up to, when I wrap up, that's queued up to, to speak, um, shortly after, after me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, the only thi- the only thing that I heard earlier, which, you know, I, I wrote down on my pad, is that traditionally, uh, they don't, uh, build in, in an R1 zone, is what I thought I heard earlier today.
Excuse me, was that a question or is that?
Yeah, yeah, did I hear that wrong? Did, that you, you had said that traditionally you don't build in, in R1 zone?
I did, I did not say that. I said, uh, the, the zoning requirements vary from market to market. From Texas, where we built several communities, has no zoning. Um, and, and so that designation R1, as Mr. Vogel went through and, and explained, is, uh, we, we, we typically build in or around residential areas, but what it's called varies, uh, from, uh, town to town and, uh, city to city and state to state.
Okay, what made you pick this spot?
I mean, I, I think I spent 20 something minutes, 20 something minutes, uh, talk, talking through that and think do you, would you like, I can, I'm happy to go through it again if you.
Just give me the short version, give me the short version, give me the two-minute answer.
No, Mr. Saro, he's already gone through a lot of testimony on that and you weren't paying attention, so I think that's, that question's already been answered. I, I can't have same questions asked over and over again, please. Go on, any other questions?
No, that'd be it for now.
Thank you. Nora, on the other hand, uh, let's take a five-minute break, okay? Five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, you're not muted, so.
Everybody coming back?
I'm back.
I'm back.
To Joshua, it's 4-1 Yanks.
I know. Do you think they're for real? You think it's nonsense?
I think Boston was way overrated.
Yeah, 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 I agree with that.
They were playing way over their heads.
But Tampa doesn't lose. I mean, they're playing Baltimore.
No, no.
It's ridiculous.
But my Giants are in first place, best record in baseball.
Yeah, crazy. Keep playing the Mets, you'll be okay.
They're all up tonight. Are we, is everybody? Uh, let's see. Mr. Capone, I don't see his face.
Uh, let's go, we got a corner.
Okay, we ready to go back on, Nora?
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
Next hand I see up is Jennifer Biondo. Jennifer, do you hear us?
Yes, I do. Hello, my name's Jennifer Biondo. I'm at 8 Henyon Drive. Hey, I have a few questions. I want, my first question is, and this probably sounds like a silly question, but how will the, this senior living community affect uh, the town, the town's firework display?
I, I couldn't speak to that.
Did you say you can't speak to that, Mr. Shet?
We can't hear you. You're on mute.
I, I did. I, I said I, I couldn't speak to how what we do has anything to do with the, the firework display. I apologize.
Next question?
The next question is, uh, as you just heard, I am on, I live on 8 Henyon Drive, I own a property, uh, over here and looking at the proposed, um, uh, map of where the property for the senior living community lies, um, it, my question is this. The, um, is the encroachment, is there an encroachment onto property, onto the property of houses, down to the cul-de-sac of Henyon Drive?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Yes. The question is, how far will this senior living community encroach onto the property of houses on Henyon Drive near the cul-de-sac? Because I do, the back, there's.
I think, I, I think you have to wait for uh, someone to speak regarding site plan. I don't know if Mr. Shet is the right witness. So, Mr. Vogel, wait for the site, wait for the.
And, Mr. Chairman, my next lis- uh, witness is Mr. Testaurus, who is the, uh, uh, site engineer who, uh, designed the site plan and he will testify to all of those aspects, including the question asked by this person.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question.
If she's speaking, I can't hear her.
Jennifer, can you unmute yourself?
I am on, I am not muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, there has been a little bit of delays with the wifi. I think, uh, there were a couple of freezing. All right, so my question is this. Will this facility, the senior living community, provide any sort of tax relief to neighboring communities?
Yeah, I, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that. Somebody else on the team would have to, uh, Jared, follow your lead.
Is there anyone else on the, on the, on the call that can speak to that? Or is that slated for a different meeting?
I, I, can you repeat your, repeat your question, please?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Will the senior living community provide any kind of tax relief to neighboring communities?
What, what neighboring communities are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
East Townover, Hanover Township, Whippany, I, I, I don't.
Parsippany Troy Hills.
But you're, you're not talking about a neighboring. But you're, you're not talking about a neighboring community, you're talking about a, a neighborhood? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm over, which is only one street away from where this, you know, community is going to be put up. Is there any kind of tax relief for any party, either our community, the one that it, it, it adjacent to, or any part of Precipity to, for any kind of tax relief? Or is it going to increase our taxes exponentially?
Mr. King, can you, can you clarify that? I, I don't understand.
First of all, again, this is not something for this witness, but this facility would be taxed, and that revenue, that would go into the general revenue. Again, it's, it's one of these entities that there's no schoolchildren, so the, the school taxes, you know, the school tax, the schools won't be impacted. These types of developments have benefit in some communities for taxes because they usually don't use the services. And then the other argument against it is, is that then some of the police, the ambulance, you know, fire, those type of services will go there. So, again, I, I don't think anyone can answer that until you see what is put in place here. But the town will tax it, the tax assessor will come out, I will assess the value of the property and the land, and it'll be part of the overall municipality's taxable properties.
Thank you.
If you're, if you're asking whether you, your, your property is going to get a reduction in taxes, is that what you're asking?
I'm asking this, that there's going to be an increase in taxes.
I mean, this, this property, I will tell you, the property right now, that, that, that this project would be on, is, is, is taxed at a undeveloped property, which is the cheaper, cheapest, usually the cheapest you could tax proper on. Once there's construction, they're going to be taxed and be paying more taxes to Precipity. That I, I can tell you.
Peter, it's owned by the church, I don't know if it's paying any taxes.
You're, you're absolutely right, that's correct. It is, if it's owned by the church, it's probably tax, tax exempt.
That's right.
Any other questions, just beyond that?
I have one last question, and this is definitely for Les Stretch. You mentioned before you were answering a question, and the wifi kind of kicked out a little bit. Can you just clarify that, that you did say that ten of the units for the, ten units have, of the, of the independent living cottages will be two bedrooms, and ten in the assisted living apartments will be two bedrooms?
Um, I think the, the plans are available if you wanted to review them, but I'm happy to, to go over them. It's, the, in, in the apartment section, there's, as I've listed now, I think twelve two bedrooms, maybe, maybe fourteen, and then the, I'm trying to pull them up, I don't have them pulled up in front of me. And then there's a series of, of the cottages that have two-bedroom cottages as well.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't understand how, what the counts were earlier when someone else was asking the question, which is why I just wanted to clarify it. Alright, that's all my.
Our bifurcated submission, though, they're listed on, on the plans.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks for the questions.
Okay, uh, Jen, Diana Arvittson. If we could unmute her. Diana? Diana, can you hear us?
There we go. Okay. So, I, I'd like to start by saying.
Ma'am, if you could do a dress for the record, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Diana Orvitzon. I live over on one thirty-eight Longview Avenue in Lake Hiawatha. I am concerned about this project from a town perspective, as well as I have a grandson going to the high school. So, first, Mr. Stretch, I'd like to tell you, I really commend what your organization is trying to do, and I believe there is a need in the healthcare industry for something like this. However, I don't necessarily agree that that property is the right location, and I'll get into my questions. No, I am, I'm getting into my questions. So, are there, and this is for the board first, are there currently any restaurants or liquor licenses in Precipity and residential areas?
I, I don't, can answer that.
Well, I think you can answer that question, sorry. You can come out of town tomorrow and, and find out where all the liquor licenses are, and I'm, I'm sure that the administration would be more than happy to provide it.
Okay. They can go to the clerk's office for that information.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Stretch, what type of security is planned for this community, if any?
Yes, ma'am, are you him up for the residents?
Yes.
Yeah, so, we have a team that's, works inside the community twenty-four hours a day, and so there's three different shifts, as we discussed on the last call. We have a concierge and security that's at the desk twenty-four hours a day, and depending on the hour, there's multiple people that are, that are up there. So, we work closely with local law enforcement as well.
Okay, so, is there any, it's not like a gated community, they could be able to drive into the complex, but they wouldn't be able to go into the building itself, because that's where the security is?
Yeah, yeah, just think of it as laying right into the fabric of the neighborhood. So, cars can drive through your neighborhood, they would be able to drive through where the cottages are.
Okay, okay. So, that means like during Halloween, kids could walk into those neighborhoods for trick-or-treating, or if there's candy drives, you know, those kinds of things at school, or Boy Scouts.
I sure hope so.
Okay. Will there be any restrictions that residents have to have lived within Precipity, or within a certain mileage from Precipity, or is this open to anybody in the state?
Oh, we can't discriminate against, against those folks, so.
Yeah, well, I know your intention, as you stated, was, you know, to be able to live where you live. That was why I asked that question.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Will the board take into effect the additional traffic as part of their decision? Okay. Will residents in the facility be required to be vaccinated? I wasn't sure that I understood what you were saying earlier about your members being vaccinated. Is that going to be a requirement?
Yeah, up until now, the majority of senior living communities, and we are one of those, have not mandated max vaccines of residents, but almost every one of our communities has a hundred percent adoption of, or a hundred percent uptake of vaccinations. They were more than willing, and Thrive was in the first wave of vaccinations that were, when they began distribution, we were in group one A. So, it could, it could become an requirement, and so, but as of now, it's not.
Okay. And then, in your other facilities, did you find that there was a, a need for ambulances more so there than you would at, like, a normal residential area?
More than, I, I could probably just use numbers. So, we, we probably average of one a week at our community that just opened, that's mostly independent living. So, I don't know how that compares to a normal residential setting, but it's, it's not something that, I think that was a concern on the first call, and I don't think I was asked the, or maybe I was asked directly, but it doesn't, it's not something that is, is coming back and forth every day, multiple times per day.
Okay, okay. And so, for the board, if the traffic study, and I know this isn't Mr. Stretch, would show that there is a need for roadwork on two oh two or other streets, would that be the responsibility of the, this company, or would the town be responsible to make any changes?
If I could, the town would do a developers agreement, and that, those issues may be part of that developers agreement. That's after any approvals would be provided by this board to the applicant.
Okay. Um, and then, so, in the area, Mr. Stretch, that you are, are looking at, there are many other properties just past, say, Halsey Road. Did you take those into consideration as well? Because they're more, they're not residential, they're, they're more corporation, but they're so close to the housing.
Ms. Orvitzon, I think the discussion of similar properties, unsimilar properties, et cetera, was well addressed at previous meeting.
Okay. I'm not sure I totally agree, but okay, I'll take that. And then, for the board, what considerations do you take into, into effect to grant this variance?
This, this is not a question for you to ask the board members, it's a question to ask questions of the witnesses. But the, the board man, the board will follow the law based upon the evidence provided in this application, and make a decision according to both the law and the facts provided by the application, and also the case by the objectors.
Okay. All right, that's it. No, thank you, I, I appreciate your, your candid answers, thank you.
Right, I see one last hand raised, Brittany Polazati. Brittany, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Brittany, yeah.
Great, thank you. Just want to say thank you again for the zoning board for letting me ask my questions here.
We just needed.
Oh, yes, Brittany. Yep, Brittany Polazati, four eighty-one Lake Shore Drive. Okay? Am I good testing?
Is that Lake Shore Drive in Precipity or Lake Hiawatha?
That's Precipity, yep.
Thank you.
Right on Lake Precipity.
You can ask your questions.
Perfect, thank you. So, my first question is, given that GTP acquisition is the parent company for Thrive, and GTP acquisitions' primary business is a cellphone tower company, has Thrive, GTP acquisitions, or Pike discussed with the town at any time the possibility of now or in the future of including cellphone towers on this property?
Uh, I, I don't know where the information came from, that GTP acquisitions is a cellphone tower company. We, we don't own any cellphone towers, and the GTP stands for gallium thrive pike, those are the three, that's our, those are the three groups that came together to, to form this. So, maybe, maybe you got more misinformed, but there, there will not be any cellphone towers or anything like that on that. So, two, two answers to your question.
Okay, okay, that helps. And then, have, just from my understanding, have you put any cellphone towers on any of your thirty-plus properties?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
That, that wouldn't be very fun to live around.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then, my, my next question for you, Les, is you mentioned the great project up in Montvale, New Jersey, and I am familiar with that area, as well as Grand Ave specifically. I also understand that it is highly commercial area up there with corporate offices, and it is not an R1 wooded parcel. I do agree that the board should go look at it with you. So, I just wanted, my question for you was, why do you consider this a good reference?
Yeah, great, great question. It's, it's, uh, there's commercial near, and it's, we built because of what we could see is the incoming townhomes that are coming in, and res, single-family residential that are coming in all around it. That area is in a big redevelopment, and so there's a lot of, like, what we did, we, we bought a, a building that was staying there and knocked it down, because if you were to come up and tour, you'd be able to see all around it, there's brand-new residences that are building right there, and it's in the, like I said, the fabric and normal path of travel of the community, so.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And residential's, I mean, it's, it's across the street and to the left. So, it's, it's right there in the middle of residential.
Okay. All right. Um, and then, my, my next question for you, Les, is in Precipity, I know you talk a lot about you wanting to be in the heart of the community and the fabric as well. We already have two sunrise offerings right here off of two oh two, one point five miles away, off of forty-six, and another two and a half miles away, off of ten. What is your anticipated demand for your community here in Precipity?
Yeah, really, huh? We, we believe it's, or we wouldn't, wouldn't be doing it, the communities that you're referencing, I couldn't speak to how, how well they're doing, or how they weathered COVID. But what, what we build, something is, is, obviously, you can see by the way things are laid out, not based on an old clinical model that you'd want to go, it feels like you're living in a more clinical hospital setting. And so, we're building senior living that we believe will be relevant for the decade or more to, to come. So, we, we don't have concerns about the, the demand, as, as we've been looking at this for the last couple of years. Was, was that your question? Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did. And then, just so that I have the understanding, it, it's about a hundred and fifty-five units, is that correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it's a hundred and fifty-six.
Okay. And then, so, do you intend to rely on the volunteer ambulance corps and the fire department to service those a hundred and fifty-six units?
No, we usually have a, a contract with a, a specific ambulance company, and lots of times, that's required before we get licensed. We have to, there has to be a known group that we would go to if, if there was an emergency situation.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was going to ask, because I know sometimes when you do have those contracts, that it's on a scheduled basis, as opposed to emergency services. So, you know, let's say at the middle of the night, there's an emergency, people typically call nine-one-one, and that's routing to the, the volunteers.
Yeah, we, we usually have a, a contract, so we have direct access to them.
Okay. Okay. And then, my last, last question for you, Les, is a follow-up to, I believe, somebody else's question, and I apologize, I forgot her name, but it was around the taxations, and I understand that we said here that we're not going to be able to, to answer some of those questions. But what I wanted to just clarify with you, if you're able to answer that, is will this property be tax neutral or not?
We, we, we pay, we pay taxes, yeah.
Right, and the reason I ask that, right, because of, of it being a church property at this point, so.
Yeah, once the church sells it to them, if it happens, it goes off the examples and, and goes on to the taxpaying roles, as I understand, right, Mr. King?
Look, so, properties that, if churches don't use properties for church-related reasons, it, it can become taxable. So, even if somehow the church kept this property, because it's for profit, it becomes a taxable, tax, taxable land. If, if they had used it, if the church maybe used it for a retirement home, or an age-restricted home, or whatnot, or this type of facility for just church, you know, priests, the nuns, et cetera, then they could probably keep it as tax exempt, because it is for a church purpose. But once they sell it, or lease it, or rent it to, for lack of a better word, civilians, it becomes a taxable entity.
That, yeah, just like taxes, but are those taxes net of the services that are required to maintain it?
The church tax, whatever you want.
Yeah, that, that I don't know, that you, at this point, you, you could answer. I, I, I couldn't answer, I don't know if this witness could answer. Maybe if there's a financial person who's going to be presented based upon other, like, units, but again, each unit is different.
If I could just comment, you heard there will be no school-aged children separated from this development. And the, wherever dollar you take in in taxes, about 65 cents goes to education. That money now will go to other entities, so it is a debt ratable to the municipality.
Yes.
I understand, John, you mean to say that they're not going to pay school taxes?
No, I think what he's saying, it's not going to generate kids that are going to to eat up any school budget. So it will be, it's going to be, it's going to pay those, but not use them.
Yeah, we pay those taxes, but don't put additional burden on the school system is is the short way to say it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, sorry, real quick, just to Les's comment there. Do you put any other burden on the town and any of those other services that you'd be offering?
We're a self sustained business, so if you want to give a specific burden, I can speak to it.
I'm just thinking like garbage or any of those town type services.
Yeah, we usually have a contract with a garbage company that that'll come by and pick those up and whether it's, you know, once a week or a couple of times a month, there's just a dumpster that's tucked away.
You also plow your own roads, isn't that correct?
What'd you say?
You also plow the snow on your own roads. You don't have the town coming to plow you.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We we have contracted a snow removal service. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And last question I promised here, Les, do you have any idea where those dumpsters would be located?
Yeah, they should be on the the site plan. We have to designate where those are.
We have to wait for site plan on that question until we have the engineer come and speak, okay?
Yep, understood. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Nora, any other hands raised?
Yes, Jason Anderson, are you out there? Jason, do you hear us?
I would just like to state for the record that Mr. Jason Anderson is also on the list.
Is he?
Of whether he is. I'm just stating that.
Again, if he is a member of that group, he's already represented by council.
So he would have to say he's not a member of the group before I could ask the question.
That's, you know, and then hopefully to Mr. Vogel's point is we will get a clarification from both the group and council who their members are and or aren't. And and you can only hope that, you know, people are telling you the truth, but you know, that, you know, we'll try to get some more information to verify as best we can.
He is unmuted.
Hello? Jason Anderson, 26 Dolly Drive.
Jason, are you a member of the group that hired the attorney?
Not that I know of. I'm friends with people, but.
Okay, because I guess a list was provided by the leader of that group and your name was on that list. So so you do not want to be represented by Mr. Bryce?
No.
And you did not provide, you did not provide any money for an attorney?
Not for an attorney, no.
Okay, what did you provide money for?
A sign.
So you just bought a sign? Okay. All right.
Okay, I just want to make clear, clearly, there was a group that was very active and did a good job getting people to give money to buy a sign. That group then also apparently hired the attorney. Is my understanding how this came down. So if the people that gave money to buy a sign didn't agree to hire attorney, then we can proceed this way. But yep, is that correct?
Yes, that that's exactly what I would, yeah, yes. And that's what we're trying to find out, how this group came about and 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 we're going to get clarified clarification for the next meeting, so we don't have to continue to do this.
Very good.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, great. Les, a couple of times you mentioned that you don't want to be on the outskirts of town. What outskirts of Persippany?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing Mr. Anderson. Is there a way to make it a little bit louder?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Les, a couple of times you've mentioned that you don't want to build on the outskirts of town. Can you tell me in Persippany, what you consider the outskirts of town?
What?
I mean, I think.
That you don't build, you don't like to build on the outskirts of town. I'm trying to figure out why you think some place in Persippany is unsafe, because you just made that comment as well. You don't want to build in an unsafe part of town. I'm just trying to figure out what part of Persippany is unsafe that you would not want to build there.
Yeah, Jason, I love to answer your your question. I don't know what comment you're making in regards to Persippany being unsafe. I was, the safety comments were mostly around COVID and our ability to keep folks saying.
No, no, that's incorrect. That's incorrect. You mentioned just 15, 20 minutes ago that you don't want to build on the outskirts of town because of safety issues. And I'm wondering, how can you consider to build here if you think Persippany in any part of it is unsafe?
I'm not sure what you're making reference to. There's there's no.
I'm glad that this is recorded, so you can, you know, go back and listen to it.
Okay, just to be clear for the record, we don't have concerns or we wouldn't build in Persippany if we didn't think it was a safe town. And the comments around safe, so I appreciate you you bringing it up. And so I spoke extensively about the reasons we we want to build and have had success building where people already live. And so it's been a failure in the past to build on the on the edge of town, because none of us on this call would want to live out there away from.
And you've said that a bunch of times, but I kind of want to say that in Persippany, we don't have many, if any, part of town that fits that bill. So I don't understand what you're trying to get at here in Persippany.
There's no question pending.
Mr. Stretch, can you can you answer this question or can we move on? If you can't answer the question, there's no sense in us continuing with this. Can you answer that question?
I don't know what the question, I mean, he needs to ask a question.
I didn't refuse to answer, but that's okay. Has any other of your properties, have you clear cut like an old growth growth forest? As you're proposing here to put up artificial landscaping and pave over 13 acres?
I'd have to walk through with our development team on on what.
You seem very, very involved in all of your projects, so you wouldn't know that the property that you've bought in a previous engagement was, had a tree on it?
Yeah. Let me take a stab at answering it. The we, before we move dirt, we have a tree survey done and we work with local planners about what it looks like to minimize that. We we love green space and have articles that are written right now about the advancement of biophilic design, which is integrating nature into the pathways of the building. And so we've been really at the forefront of that. And most of the articles about what's been written in Montville, New Jersey is talking about the future of senior living because we we kept about an almost the size of a football field inside of the community to design and kind of keep a lot of that green still involved in life. So you're not living inside of hallways anymore. So our hearts to preserve as much as we can of the natural aesthetic that's there.
The site plan that you submitted doesn't really go to that, though.
Yeah, again, we do a tree survey and do our best to keep as many as possible that because it honors the the land that's there, so.
I understand what you're trying to get at, but I don't see that in your site survey. So we're going nowhere with that one. Verifiable need, you wrote this up a couple of times. What do you consider a verifiable need of this property is?
Yeah, I'm happy to go back through that. We spent about 10 or 15.
I'm saying like, how do you, what do you, what would you say a verif, like, how do you qual, you know, qualify a verifiable need?
Again, I don't know if you were on the last call. We spent a good bit of time on that. So, Mr. Chairman.
Verifiable need, but like if I go on Google.
Mr. Anderson, you please give the opportunity to answer the question.
Yes, sir, there are, Kane.
We spent a good bit of time on that on the last call, so I'd have you encourage and go back and watch. I'm happy to go through it again, Mr. Chairman, if you'd want me to.
I don't want you to repeat any testimony that's already been given. The testimony at prior meetings is available for anyone to review. So if you feel you've already given an ample answer to that.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson, go back and look at the tape. If he's not satisfied, if he's got specific questions, he can come back at the next meeting and ask those questions.
I was on the last meeting, and that's why I'm asking this question, because we just talked about verifiable need. We didn't talk about how it's qualified, how he can say it's verifiable, like, how do you?
Can you answer the question or not?
When I, when I looked this up, I kind of, like, the last.
Yeah, there's a question, there's a question before the witness by the chairman. Mr. Stretch, can you answer that question from the member of the public?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. King, thanks. And so is it how we view that this site has demand for the product that we're building? Is that the question?
That's the viable need, right?
That's the viable need, yeah. And we went through that, that we have worked locally with Pike, who's based out of Patterson, New Jersey, help identify the first round of of potential sites that fit the things that we laid out on the last call. And then we go through and measure an unmet demand. There's software programs that we use for a variety of things. So again, I don't know how detailed you'd want me to get, but it but beyond meets the minimum metric that we would use in most of the categories, so.
You mentioned in like two calls ago about a conversation you must have had with the church property about them allowing you use of their parking lot for your ingress and egress. Can you tell us more about that?
Yeah.
We're going to have the 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 witnesses that will testify as to the site plan and we will have a traffic analysis done by a traffic expert.
Okay, thank you. That'd be great. But I remember Les saying that he had a conversation with the church. I was wondering if he.
We didn't like to make the engineer and the traffic, okay? So we're going to be giving you much more information, much more insight into the.
Understand what Les had a conversation with the church about?
We're going to hold off on that until the engineer and the traffic person speaks, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll take that as a no. Nora, any other hands raised?
I have no new hands raised, just of those who had already asked their questions.
Okay. It is now 9:54. I would love to say we could start another witness. But it doesn't seem possible. Nora, what, what, we have a meeting for them, a whole meeting for them?
If we are going to have them at a regular meeting, it will be December 8th.
What? When?
December 8th. I am booked until December 8th, our regular meetings.
And that's, and that, Mr. Vogels, with us for the last month, doing special sessions and coming in early.
We've expanded our meetings from 7:30.
Excuse me, I haven't recovered from what you just said.
At least, at least it's in 2021. Look at the advance. I'm sorry, Mr. Vogel, and I wish I could say that we might be able to squeak out another special meeting, but with the Jewish holidays in September, with restrict other holidays coming up, it's very, very difficult to to get seven people together. And I don't want to do it with a short board.
I'm sensitive to it. I understand it, but, you know, we filed this application and through no fault of either the board, the public, or the applicant, this has gone on and on. COVID had a lot to do with it. We're doing it remotely, which makes it somewhat easier because we don't have to leave our homes or in order to get it done, but but December, it's just, it's a horror when it comes, and we lose the continuity. I have probably three more witnesses. I have the engineer, the traffic consultant, and the planner. I also would like to put on architectural as well, so maybe it's four witnesses. And at the rate we're going, will be the end of 2022. I understand.
Unfortunately, the course examination by members of the public and by the attorney takes about twice as long as your presentation, and we really don't have any control over that. I'm doing my best to move it along and try to avoid duplicate questions and questions of witnesses that they can't answer.
That's right.
Doing my best, really.
I understand that, and I understand that everybody on the board is a volunteer and and you're giving up of your time in order to serve Persippany. I'm fully aware of that. But but the timeframe is so extended and I'm also, I'm understanding of the holidays. I, you know, I I enjoy the holidays that, like all of us, and I, when we get near near the holidays, it does become difficult. But Thanksgiving is off to the end of November. We have the whole month of you indicated the holidays, the beginning of September, we have the whole second half of September, and we have all of October and the November before Thanksgiving. We must, must be, must be some dates in there that we can perhaps have a special meeting so that we can move this along.
No, September's totally out of the question, so forget, forget September.
You know, just, could I interrupt? And I guess, sitting here and looking at this application, the emotion around it, and Les, I'm going to put this to you, okay? I think you've done a wonderful job presenting your business side and the business deed in our town. I think what we're hearing from our constituency here, who we represent as well, is objection to the site, okay? And I think you clearly understand that, right? So these questions and everything we're dealing with, quite frankly, substance and things for us to make decisions on, to form the opinions and and then either approve or disapprove this application are going to be very, very lengthy, okay? We're going to continue this, as the chairman said, Mr. Vogel, as you said, the people that we have in the community that are going to line up and have the right to speak and have the right to ask questions are going to continue to stack up, okay? And so either we're going to agree that this is going to take another year or so, or we're going to have to have a bunch of special meetings, or we're going to have to talk some other way. So that's where I'm at right now. And I'm going to be here for the duration. It falls well to Lord's will, so.
I'm just, I'm going, I'm going through the calendar right now, and September is out completely. There's a couple of day, potential dates in the month of October, but then November, you have the legal municipalities, which knocks out a week, and you've got Thanksgiving, which knocks out a week. So the only possibility that we have is the two open Wednesdays in October. Now, I would not be opposed to meeting on, especially on a meeting like this, because you don't have to do any traveler and, you know, everybody can meet. So we've got a couple of days. We've got the 13th and we've got the 27th. But I've got to get the cooperation of the board that want to hear another special meeting. And I don't know if I, if I have that cooperation, or maybe you guys can raise your hands if you think we can do another special meeting in October. We're already doing special meetings every, every meeting. We've moved our meeting up for a half hour to dispense with residential applications. So I, I don't, I don't know. I mean.
I guess we just need to understand how many special meetings the applicant is going to ask for. This was a special meeting. I get it.
It's not, it's not uncommon. It's not uncommon.
I understand that, but are we going to get a special meeting after special meeting after special meeting? Or are we going to go to a regular meeting, then a special meeting? Really, I think we have to come to terms with, like, to Mr. Williams's point, this is, this one's going to take a while.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot of special meetings, Dave. Yeah.
Well, I'm going to go back to my comments that I made prior. I used to do this three times a month. I used to do it three, three, three Wednesday nights a month back in.
I used to do it four. I used to do it four.
All right, Bert. I I'm I'm gonna ask that question again. Are we willing to do a special meeting in October?
Are we talking virtual or real?
Virtual. All these meetings are gonna be virtual. We don't have the facility to accommodate the potential for a hundred and fifty people to show up. We just don't have that.
I'm available anyway. I'm available any Wednesday in October.
The thirteenth is better for me. Again, I'll say, I don't mind doing a special meeting here or there, but i- if we're gonna be asking for a special meeting for every single you know, hearing on this case, I I think we have to be in a more reasonable place.
I feel the same way as Mr. Kaplan.
My suggestion is we do a special meeting for the thirteenth, and then schedule him also for December eighth, so he doesn't lose that spot.
Yeah, I'm not available the October thirteenth or or whatever date you just said in mid-October.
Whatever, but I think we should at least schedule two meetings, is my point.
Casey, are you available? Ready, are you available?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
If if we could have, I understand Mr. Kaplan's uh comments, and if we could have October thirteenth and December, whatever that date was that Nora indicated, the eighth or whatever, uh, if we could have those two dates, I have some confidence that I might be able to finish. I don't think the cross-examination by the public uh will be as extensive for the technical witnesses as it was for Mr. Stretch. And hopefully, maybe in two meeting, two meetings, I can get this done.
You're very helpful, Mr. Vogel. I'm hoping you get it done by the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, let's go back to the to the volunteers here now. Uh, you, Dave, you said you're good for the thirteenth, uh, Scott, thirteenth? Yes, uh, who am I missing? Um, Nancy, you said you're not available, right?
That is correct, not available.
Mr. Ready, are you available on the thirteenth? Mr. Ready? Can he not hear me?
He's on mute. No, he's uh, yeah.
Are you available, Mr.? Yeah, are you available on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna carry this case to the thirteenth of October, which will be a special meeting, which will require notice. I'm sorry, which will be probably publication. You will give us whatever extension is necessary. We will uh have this meeting without further notice to the neighbors. Uh, we're gonna simultaneously book you for the eighth. And on the thirteenth, depending on where we stand, we're gonna book you for a meeting in February, okay? We're gonna have, we're gonna hold the date for February for you, all right? Because I'd love to see this thing get over with, and unfortunately, um, we got busy again. And uh, you know, with a year of pent-up demand, uh, and all of a sudden, you know, everybody wants to do their swimming pool, everybody wants to do their their deck and everything and uh, et cetera, so.
Did that, everybody wants to travel anywhere.
That's right. That's right. They want to put pools in their backyard, so they don't have to go anywhere.
If we do, if we do October thirteenth is, what about the that date in December that that Nora had mentioned?
We're gonna hold that. We're gonna hold that for you.
That's December, what, eighth?
Yes, the eighth.
Okay.
Good, so we'll see you. I appreciate it very much. I appreciate your time and and uh and I understand it's somewhat of an imposition, but uh, I appreciate October thirteenth. I think uh, I think you've been fair about that.
Okay, you're, and we're gonna do this without further notice, with whatever extensions are required, and I need a motion to that effect.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So Nancy, you'll get the tapes, then you can, you can follow up with after that thirteenth meeting, okay? Anything else, Nora?
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody, um, and hopefully we can resolve some of these housekeeping issues before the thirteenth of October. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Tom Ward, second.
All, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night, everyone. Have a good evening. Yeah, go right to bed.
They don't have far to go.
That's true. Have to have a glass of wine first, though.